Okay, welcome to Committee of the Hole. It is February 20th, 6:00 PM. Annie, would you call the roles, please?
Cobb.
President.
Kuta.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Boyd.
Onaway.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have several things on the agenda today, including the Western Reserve Land Conservancy presentation, CDVG recommendations, and several other things. I will start, is Western Row? Yeah, there we go.
Is there a case, can we plug in our presentation?
Do you have a flash drive?
Laptop. Do you have HDMI? Can we get online?
Yeah, you can get online.
Okay.
All right. And while you guys are doing that, I'll just let our audience know what else is coming up. We're going to discuss council rules and the legislative process, which we've done actually in the last two Committee of the Holes. And then we'll do a legislative review. And the mayor has a couple of updates he's going to give us. And then we adjourn to go to the regular meeting where we'll discuss, I'm sorry, where we'll go through the legislation that we discuss here. And I'm sorry, with us today, we have?
Adrian Marty. I work with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy.
At the point of contact. Okay.
And Isaac Robb, also with Western Reserve Land Conservancy.
And Isaac, you and I talked a couple of years? Well, hey, not two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a little bit.
And we're glad this is finally working out.
All right. Great. Thank you all for your time and attention tonight. My name is Isaac Robb, as I mentioned, with Western Reserve Land Conservancy. Quick show of hands, who here knows about the Land Conservancy as an organization? Couple people. You probably think, oh, you guys work in beautiful, pristine farms, natural areas, things like this. And while that is the case, we are really focused on the conservation and preservation of pristine natural areas and working farms in Northeast Ohio. We also spend a lot of time focused on our urban areas as well. I am a City of Cleveland resident. Adrian was a long time ago. I use Parma now, so don't hold that against him. So our thriving communities program is the urban program of the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. That was founded by my former supervisor, Jim Rupakis, the former county treasurer. And really, the thrust of that initiative was dealing with the effects of the central project crisis. There are obviously a lot of vacant abandoned properties, not only in the City of Cleveland, Northeast Ohio, but throughout the state. So initially, our work focused on the creation of county landbanks throughout the state of Ohio. Obviously, everyone here, I'm sure, is aware of all the great work that the Cuyahoga Land Bank does. Out of the 88 counties in Ohio, I think we're up to 67 that have county landbanks. There's an Ohio Land Bank Association, so this isn't something that was an issue of vacant abandoned properties in Northeast Ohio, Cuyahoga County. It's really a statewide and a national issue. So you might have also received some free treats to be adopted. That's something that we like to do. We also do other programs like creating community gardens, parks, things of that nature. But tonight, we're really going to be focusing on our property inventory program. When I moved to Cleveland in 2015, I was an intern, and I worked on the first city of Cleveland, citywide property inventory. Mayor, I think you were still with county council at that time, perhaps? And we were, we were really excited to do an inventory of a city that size. It wasn't the largest city that had been done. The Obama administration gave a lot of funding to Detroit. But what was really spectacular about that issue is that we were able to utilize new hardware and software tools to be able to capture data in real time, store in the cloud, essentially, not for free, but at a very low cost, and then distribute and edited it in real time. And this is what we received a lot of on the streets. A lot of vacant abandoned buildings. This one actually is a little nicer than what we encountered in that it was boarded and secured. A lot of them at that phase, you know, 2015, things were pretty bleak. And the issue is, as Jim was going around the state trying to get money for demolition dollars and rehab dollars, people would always ask, well, what's the level of need? How many properties are you dealing with? He was primarily focused on residential structures, and everyone was just sort of guessing. And so these property inventories, while they are a new idea, you know, in the past, they had done them, but with Polaroid cameras, papers, pens, things like that. So it's really taking new tools to address really old problems. And we like to say that data doesn't make us smarter, but it does keep us more informed. And so it went from, okay, identifying vacant abandoned buildings, to then monitoring demolition primarily in the City of Cleveland. But it's evolved into what can be used from a proactive code enforcement measure. So when the new City of Cleveland Building and Housing Director, Director Sally Marko Tool, she was formerly with South Euclid, when she came to office, she said, okay, the first thing we need to do is an update of that property inventory in Cleveland, right? That's going to be really critical for all the policies that the administration wanted to accomplish. We've been done property inventories and sort of these types of code enforcement in a variety of cities. And since 2013, here's some other communities we've worked in that, you know, obviously Cleveland's sort of the biggest elephant, Northeast Ohio, but this tool has been used in a lot of communities of various sizes. The first property inventory we did was actually in the City of Lorain. You can see that's about 30,000 parcels. We, I think, have inventoried that two times at this point. Adrian and another surveyor actually walked the entirety of Lorain themselves. It was a two-person team. How many months did that take you?
That was almost six months.
Yeah, so he knows Lorain really, really well. Probably even better than Parma. We've also surveyed East Cleveland a couple of times. Like I said, Cleveland twice. And just to give everyone a little bit of context, Cleveland Heights has how many? 16,390, okay. So it's a little bit in between, you know, the equivalent of a couple of neighborhoods in Cleveland combined. And we are working currently with Jennifer Kuzma and the First, the Inter域 Suburbs Consortium to do an update on the City of Euclid, which is around 19,000 parcels. The City of South Euclid, which is around 9,000 parcels. And then Cleveland Heights is sort of rounding out the third. So we were able to get some economies of scale, get up and running, things of that nature. So again, why is this important? How does this matter to you? How are you going to benefit? Ultimately, that's going to come to people like Alan, who's been a great partner on this, members of council, the mayor's administration. Like I said, the data itself isn't going to solve your problems. I heard you guys talking about, you know, the new VR with that. It's just a new way of looking at things, right? It doesn't create or solve your problems. It just gives you new tools to be able to address things. So again, not to be, you know, sort of the point to death, but in Cleveland, Director Marko Tool really was using this updated data to pass and get the recent legislation around the residents-first legislation. This was sort of the baseline for that. So it was dealing with vacant abandoned properties still, but mostly out-of-state landlords, deteriorating property conditions, land issues, things of that nature. So we are working with a team of six surveyors in Cleveland Heights. Adrian's been really impressed with their, their progress to date. We had a two-day training, what was that, two weeks ago? I think at the rec center. Got everyone up to speed. There was actually members of Alan's team in the Building and Housing Department, some planning department staff. And this is a really great way, the entire municipality to come together, have a shared understanding of the questions being asked, the data that will help, you know, improve processes. And it was great, Alan, one of your staff members, actually, I worked with on the 2015 Cleveland property inventory. I don't think I've seen him in 15 years, but it was great to see him start on a property inventory. And now he's really working in housing inspection code compliance, things like that. And so he'll be a great addition to this process as well. So we were walking, and Adrian will spend a little bit of time on the how we're doing this, so I won't belabor that too much. But these teams of six surveyors are working in teams of two, and they're walking in pairs with iPads and answering a series of up to 50 questions on the conditions of every parcel in the City of Cleveland Heights. Again, I will, still, Adrian's thunder. So with that, I'll sort of hand it off to talk a little bit about what the surveyors are looking for, how they're evaluating things. And then we'll sort of wrap it up and happy to answer any and all questions that I'm sure are burning deep within you. So Adrian, take your light.
That training was incredible. So having staff from Cleveland Heights there, it just was great communication and kind of set standards. So these surveyors are out there right now. They knocked out 2,000 this week. Great weather is happening. And so they're really taking a lot of pride in the quality of data they're collecting. And these are some of the categories that we focus on. So this is kind of what they're seeing while they're moving through the neighborhoods. And as Isaac said, you kind of take in each variable and starts to kind of lead you into other variables to collect more data. So yeah, properties. Yeah, we were on corners during the training, taking in mixed-use development, large-scale new development, but everything's in real time. So, you know, if a project is in kind of the process of being completed, they take it in for what is happening at that moment. These are the variables that they're covering, so institutional, mixed-use, and even other. It kind of flows into right-of-ways and different land uses that might not fit, but sometimes it does create patterns that you're not aware are happening in your city through that other designation. Sidewalk condition is so important. So this became really important during the Cleveland survey, terms of accessibility. So even during this project, the first week, one of the schools did have sidewalk issues. So, you know, you can start to see how that affects accessibility for children. Street trees, which is such an important part of our work. So taking in tree canopy. And dumping, which is becoming an issue that our team is working on with different communities.
I'm sure you've done it at Cleveland Heights, though. Just pristine all the way, all the way around.
The notes section, which is such an important part of this project. So the trained surveyors really take in information and community engagement is such an important part also, where conversations with folks in Cleveland Heights will end up in these notes. And that has affected policy in different projects. Here is really one part of the final report. So this is mapping estrabula. And you start to see the scale of certain types of land uses. Our team is analyzing this data in incredible ways. This is part of our story map and representation of street tree canopy and areas that are in the most need. This was from our Hamilton project, which the scale, some of the issues that you don't even know are happening in your city actually present themselves. So there was these small plots of land that residents were actually being tempted by. So, you know, they were just kind of kept asking surveyors, like, what is this? We're like, we're not sure. We didn't see this coming, so. It's always great to find those new patterns. And so write the analysis. You can start to really take in certain sections of your city and start to see those patterns again. This is part of our story map. An issue that came up in the Cleveland survey was the out-of-state ownership. And so we can start to see that, we can verify the fact that out-of-state ownership wasn't keeping up their properties as well as in city ownership. And this is actually what the surveyors are looking at every day. So, yeah, we have the street view, a nice clean view, and they can move through. And, yeah, every single parcel, you'll see the scale. There's some that are kind of larger and little nooks and crannies, but we're going to collect all, every single of the 16.
Sure, I'm going to hop in right here, Adrian, if you don't mind. So again, I want to say that I think really where the value at here is, you know, we're collecting and consolidating all the publicly available data through NST and Neo Can Do. That's sort of the undergirding of all of the data. So that's your ownership, tax delinquency, zoning, land use codes, things of that nature. We combine, you know, historic redlining maps. We have opportunity zone information. We have USPS postal vacancy. So all of that is consolidated. And then added on top of that are the unique questions that the staff that is working on behalf of the City of Cleveland Heights is working on. So I'm going to pull this up real quick. And Adrian sort of highlighted some of the analysis can be done. Those are the questions that are really, like, who's all of you to be thinking about? Again, City Cleveland was wanting to show the linkage between peeling paint and the adjacency to schools, right? So we would show hotspots of where paint issues, bare soil was adjacent to schools. We could show, again, the hotspots for the illegal dumping by wards. So maybe those of you representing a specific constituency has a specific issue, you might want to see all the cracked sidewalks, you know, in your, you know, specific area of suburb. So we can break that. Exactly, yeah. And so, and that's why, but you still might have specific people calling you, bugging you, and you can really drill down on the census tract block group, things of that nature. So pull this up. So it's great, as well as, and Adrian was saying about the real time, we can search, you know, whether we're here, you know, maybe Adrian's taking spring break in Cancun, but we can see the feed in real time. And so this is part of what the project is covering, is we can look, you know, at any given time and say, okay, so this property, occupied structure, multifamily, we click on it, and the record shows the data was collected, the surveyor name, and the time. So we're able to do quality control, and Adrian's working with them via a messaging app. And so anytime that they see something interesting or may make a mistake, they're messaging live time with Adrian, and he's, we're able to make those sort of quality control adjustments like that. And then we can also chart people's productivity. So today, let's see if we put up big numbers. Good day. 650 parcels, six surveyors. That we sort of, I think I said, we were averaging about 100 to 120 a day. So not to make everything a competition, but Cleveland Heights is doing a much more expeditious job than South Euclid and Euclid right now. So I wish we were having those numbers on, on our other projects. But just sort of in conclusion, I wanted to sort of say, like, this is also a great opportunity for people to get out and show that, you know, people care, that the administration cares, that the local government cares. We get a lot of questions. Adrian, I don't know if you want to hand out your cards. All surveyors are equipped with sort of an explanation of what's happening. They have a Cleveland Heights badge. It actually has Adrian's personal number on it. So if any resident escalates things and really doesn't understand why we're out taking photos from the sidewalk, they'll be called Adrian. You can sort of de-escalate it, answer any questions. All the public safety forces have been announced as well. And then ultimately, this is a good opportunity to use this for local public policy. Like I referenced the residents-first in Cleveland. The City of Hamilton was really interested in consolidating large tracts of vacant property for economic development purposes. So again, whatever questions you might have, this data might not be able to provide the answer, but it'll help you ask different types of questions. So thank you for your time tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sir President.
Petrus.
Thank you so much for this work. The tool that's online for the City of Cleveland, I think, is so cool. For anyone who has not seen it, I really encourage you to go on, take a look at it. And I'm really excited that we're going to have something similar to that here in Cleveland Heights. So just two quick questions. So one, I think that I heard that you said that you've done 2,000 parcels this week.
I think to, in total.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Does that mean about like six weeks for the entire survey, something?
See how the weather goes. But yeah, our, our hope is, I mean, if we could be done, we could be done by the end of March. That'd be fantastic. I would say end of April is probably what we're really targeting with, with this.
And, and one other, so suppose like a resident, like, has a change, like, let's say they say, like, oh, that's not actually true. Are they able to suggest a change to someone?
Absolutely. That's where, you know, we, we like to say that this is an opportunity to really engage with residents. Usually, no one knows what's happening better on their street than the resident that really is engaged and comes out and wants to talk with you. So, yeah, if they have something that they want to bring to attention, we can definitely take that into consideration. We do quality control throughout the process, where we will look and do spot checks. We had one college student that was home in Euclid that was a little too quick, and so we had to go through and edit a lot of their work and actually unfortunately go out and re-survey it. So the quality of the data is really important to us. I will say, though, in 2015, my house received a B Leonard grade. In 2023, it received a C, even though the countless amount of time and money we put into our house, but that's another stuff. So again, it doesn't matter necessarily what those overall grades are. It's just an indicator. You know, it's not like the City of Cleveland Heights Building and Housing Department's wasting their time on my property, but it does help sort of track those trends over time. But if a change needs to be made, we're more than happy to accommodate that.
Thank you for this. I'm very excited. We've been waiting for this survey for a long time. A question for you about the accessibility. Now, I use NST.
Oh, great.
So it looks to me like this production is even more extensive in terms of the information it gives. Would that be incorrect, or?
No, that's accurate. I would say NST is sort of the best. I mean, it is such a great data system for our, our communities and region to have. That creates the undergirding for this. So we upload all the NST data, but then we pull in that additional information, like the opportunity zones, the postal data, things like that, and then answer all these questions. But this data will be shared concurrently with the researchers and the team at, at NST and Neo Can Do after the completion of the project.
And the result will be accessible to all of us, the public included?
That is a determination for the city to make, not us.
Okay. And then, I've done inventory of North of Mayfield with the Greater Cleveland Congressations folks.
Oh, great.
And one of, sometimes we run into a, is this house really vacant? And we couldn't answer it that day, so we'd go and look at the, is the mail being dropped there? Is the water cut off? We had to go back to the office and find out the answer, so.
Absolutely. That was actually a part of our training, where it was so great to have building and housing inspectors there and the departments to explain some of the ways that they see it. But, yeah, that is something that comes up in this project a lot. And so, yeah, the same tools that you used in that situation, we discussed with surveyors.
And real quick, is the City of Cleveland Heights, are you on your own water? Are you? Okay, that might be it. Maybe you, maybe you could access your water data easier than we could. But that indicator, vacancy indicator, is a really good example. It can be really difficult to determine vacancy from the street. So we like to do a hybrid approach, where we combine the postal service data, the survey data, water data, and if you have sort of power or gas data, to create an index of probability if, if a unit is vacant or not.
Thank you.
Yes, are the surveys, surveyors talking to residents? Or just when they see a resident, they're having a conversation with the resident?
Yeah, it really depends on the personality and the kind of ease that the surveyors have. We encourage everyone to speak with them, but that's not everyone's strong suit. So if they don't feel that they can answer adequately the question, that's where we refer people to just call Adrian and, and have a deeper, deeper conversation. But Adrian, you can probably speak to the Cleveland Heights surveyors better than I can.
Even today. We say, no, please don't take pictures of anyone. If possible, please don't take a picture of a person. So it was a beautiful day, and they were out. And so they just asked them, could you not take my picture? And so they're like, look, we skipped this one. And they just handled it so respectfully. And it was like, this team is communicating so well. And they're just taking a lot of pride in this project. So, yeah, those, those moments do happen. And we have those cards. And I said, if you are not having a day where you want to have a discussion, just please respectfully give me a card, and I can, I can talk with them, but, yeah.
No, they've been great.
Yeah.
I ran across about six of them on my street. Yeah, my husband was a little taken back because he was, she was standing out and was taking a picture of our home. And so happened, I was home, and he was like, why are you taking a picture of my house? And I said, wait a minute, let me go out and find out what's going on. So when I went out, she explained herself and told everybody what she was doing and everything. I said, oh, she's fine, she's just inspecting the house, she's just doing her job.
She wore the vest, too?
She had a vest, but it was hard to, we, I didn't identify her as working for Cleveland Heights or being a Cleveland Heights person, so I asked for her badge. And she did show me her badge, because I think prior to that, something came out about, I think the gas, was it the gas company or something who was going out, pretending they were trying to do something? And so that, that made a, caught, that made us a little cautious. So that's why I asked for ID.
I'm so happy that it's been spoken that way. I mean, was there, was there anything you would suggest that might be helpful? Like that kind of didn't happen in that situation, it felt, it felt great?
No, it was very, it was, no, she was very good. So people who were around her, they were doing their job. It was perfect. It was just, we were startled, because we didn't know it was coming.
And that's what we tell the survey.
Yeah. And so she was very generous about, you know, explaining. And I wanted to see ID, because I knew of something about the illuminated electric company or whatever, gas company, who was out doing surveys, but should not have been.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure she was here. So she did show her ID as good in Cleveland Heights, yeah.
Well, and that'll let the hiring process, so all the credit should go to him for going through the survey.
She was good. Finley was full. So we had about six or seven.
You gave an example of how the data drove a, a legislation in Cleveland with the renters-first. Can you give an example of how the data might drive something the administration might do once they get it?
I mean, in a way, I'd probably defer to Mayor and Alan on that. I will, I will say, one example, and it was Hamilton. They really used this data to create a rental registry. They never had that before, and that was something that they were really keen on. Again, this was, is that pre-COVID or not? No. But it was part when the, the real estate market was getting a little funky, and they were seeing a lot more investment. And so they realized that they were, they were pretty close to Miami University. And so that rental registry was one example that, that they used from an administrative standpoint to, along.
We have another minute or two, any other questions? Oh, please.
So you will be able to, will be able to know how many out-of-state landlords?
Yes, with a caveat. I mean, investors and developers can be fairly elusive if they really want to be.
Yes.
So I'm not saying that this is, that's the most accurate aspect of it, but we can give, you know, at least a rough estimate of, of what are likely to be out-of-state occupants or out-of-state owners.
And actually, there's a bill in the Senate, State Senate, right now, 168, that says all owners, even regardless of LLC or whatever, they all have to have contact info.
Right.
You know, now, that's not true now, but that would change, that would codify what, what it is that a lot of people want.
Right. So just to show you two, again, that you can answer or ask whatever question you'd like. So you could say, I'm interested in every occupied commercial and industrial property in Cleveland Heights that received, let's say, received a grade of, where's the?
Thank you, Councilman.
A passerelle, thank you. There we go. Let's say A, a B, or a C. And obviously, we're not to completion.
Yeah.
But. So eight parcels were found so far that received, you know, commercial, and lo and behold, they're sort of in this area. So we started out mostly with the residential. We could do the same thing where we sort of clear those filters. And we could do the same thing for, you know, occupied residential. And then 2,300, you know. So again, it's pretty quick in turn, in real time. And then, you know, you can highlight them, you can change the symbology and the colors for whatever type of mapping you want. So if you have ideas on what type of results you'd like to see, Councilman, you said you looked at the Cleveland example. So like, now is the perfect time to ask us, like, the type of issues that you want to see analyzed when this is complete. Not today, but you have our time, too. You can sleep on it for a couple minutes.
Thank you both very much. We really appreciate your work.
Again, appreciate your partnership on this. We're, we're really excited to finally get this on the ground.
I'm glad to hear how great it's going.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Brian Iorio is in the house.
How you doing? Need to make sure I log out everything. Our IT guy, we got. Peter, where's that? Just hide out here.
Oh, you can't.
No. They just, they just changed this app. So of course, Peter, do you know where it is? The log out? The log out?
Is it just the three dots there at the top?
No.
No?
It's three.
You can drop it down.
Yeah, that's up, exactly.
Here? Oh, there we go, thank you.
Exactly.
Yeah. We did switch her on this year, but it's, it's real.
Okay, our next topic is uh, community development block grant recommendations. And Brian Iorio is Assistant Director.
Hi, thanks for having me, uh, most of you have seen this presentation already, uh, November, but since you have two pieces of legislation in front of you, we thought we'd go through it again. So what we're talking about is that year fifty C D B G recommendation, that's this year twenty twenty-four. We're also asking for the, some prior year funds from our uh, CARES Act funding, C D B C V is what we call it. So the, so what our budget was, we budgeted the same as we did last year, five thousand, um, of regular allocation. There are some reallocations of uh, projects that never grew, small business operation, no regular action program. And these communities. So the total available of new money, uh, twenty twenty-four money, that has already been obligated is one. I'll go through what the recommendations were for this year, so this red column is what the recommendation is from the C A C, it matches the administration's recommendation, so the same. In a nutshell, Evan planning for housing, it's, it's limited at twenty percent, so we're up to nineteen point three percent on our budget. Some notable things here are fair housing activity, we've got quite a bit of carryover funds, so if you see some things decreasing, that's usually destination. Of uh, not that they receive, they're gonna have less of a budget, but that they have old funds and they can reuse for that activity. Uh, probably our most popular uh, category is public service activities from our nonprofit partners. Uh, a lot of, especially people that have been on the C A C before, I can't remember who it is, um, Mayor Serin. Uh, there are um, a lot of uh, nonprofits that you may be familiar with, uh, some new ones this year, it's actually, there's one new year. And something that ARPA is funding as well is the Keston Center, which is a food bank, a kosher food bank. But uh, this sec, this category is limited at fifteen percent, so we're pretty close up to that fifteen percent cap, fourteen point seven percent. Public facilities and improvements, uh, these are larger ticket items. Uh, this one sixty-two eight ninety-two is actually uh, the Anisdale Road Service Center. Part of the difference here is from carryover funds from previous years. Also, uh, we're doing two park improvements this year, partially funded out of this uh, twenty-one four allocation. A small amount of thirty-one thousand, the remainder of the request of one twenty-five is coming out of our C D B G C D funds, and I'll go over that at the end. Uh, Peace Park, accessibility improvements at the Peace Park, the request is four hundred thousand, that's uh, coming out of CARES Act funding. Uh, and then Keston Center uh, is also getting some capital improvements like the ARPA application. Housing is probably uh, the most robust budget uh, for C D B G, it is from the Housing and Urban Development Department, so. Um, H R C is a long time partner and they are uh, basically getting full funding, the same with Housing Preservation Office. Uh, there's some notable things here on Housing Preservation, and then Future Homes, Future Homes Program, but they're getting some new money, but the majority of that budget is coming out. Uh, programming income from the sale of.
Elbon?
Elbon, that's right. So these are the notable things in housing, so in the past, we had a paint program, a violation repair program, a short term deferred loan program. And then, uh, since twenty eighteen, I wanna say, we had a, we called S I O, but really it was called Project Repair, it was. Those same paint and violation repair programs, but there wasn't a requirement that you be a C, only for certain areas of the city. So what uh, for, for builders uh, come up with this year is to sort of simplify everything and make it a little bit more flexible, so. There's still, there's still a senior program, there's still allocated funds dedicated to seniors and people with disabilities. Uh, that budget is a hundred fifty thousand dollars and it was, it's in the recommendation. Um, and then there's also going to be a home repair program that uh, makes all those programs eligible, uh, uh, people that aren't seniors or with a disability eligible for this program. Is that a lower uh, maximum amount that they can use? Uh, so I think that's uh.
What around fifteen or something?
That was reallocated, it's around a hundred, oh, what the, per person is, it's five thousand. So the senior program, the way it's working, and I think there's gonna be a property presentation at some point. Um, definitely at next week's Noble Corridor Planning Meeting, February twenty-seventh.
Mm-hmm.
Camera, uh, at seven P M. in Oxford Elementary, the subject is property conditions, so.
Hmm.
That's, uh, while we'll be explaining that. So uh, the senior program, it's five thousand dollar max, but they also have access to the brick, the non-senior program.
Okay.
Um, so that's a ten thousand dollar possibility for a senior to uh, to utilize. There's a max amount of years that they have to wait till they can come back and get another five thousand out of the senior program. The max on the senior program is ten thousand lifetime, on the non-senior program, it's five thousand.
Cool.
So once you become a senior, then you have access to that.
There's a salary requirement.
Yeah, there's an income requirement for all these programs. Um, another thing to note is that H R C had a purchase rehab program where they re-added home. They're asking to re-allocate those funds that they had as income to uh, their normal assistance and a grant program. So they actually made a little bit of a profit, so C D B G made a little bit of a profit. Uh, commercial economic development, there's not a whole lot of new money going to do, just for admin. Uh, but uh, there's quite a healthy balances in our, in our programs. We're revolving loan by five hundred few thousand dollars, I think, I wanna say three hundred thousand of that's under contract with C D I. Uh, storefront renovation loan, um, decent amount, but there's some, three pretty big projects that are in the works, hopefully they'll, Councilman, they'll most likely need Council approval for the contract. Uh, storefront renovation rebate, same thing, um, but there's four projects in the process. That would probably take up about a hundred fifty thousand of this. That's for uh, businesses with.
President.
Yes.
Um, the storefront renovation loan and the storefront renovation rebate, are those, are they going to be in a census tract, qualified census tract?
No, so uh, there's two ways to qualify that, it's either through uh, uh, an improvement target area, so in twenty twenty-two, I wanna say. We had somebody survey our commercial districts and then they uh, designated certain areas as being um, lighted, but not necessarily the same. Or I mean, attorneys in the, in the room, not necessarily the higher vice code version, but um, and then. Or we could do spotlight where we go to the property, do a survey and see if there's enough issues with that building to do a, for to deal with.
Thank you.
So it could be almost any property, but there has to be some level of light.
Yes.
Do you see a lot of uh, storefront renovations or not?
They are, so we get a lot of interest, I think there's some um, federal rules that may stop people from going forward with some, particularly prevailing wage.
I'm sorry?
But particularly prevailing wage, because of the cost of labor is higher.
Hmm.
Then you probably get a better quality.
Hmm.
On the project set, um, that sometimes helps uh, people from going forward, and it does, it does take the product, make the project take a little longer, because there's much more approvals. There's the storage and environmental reasons, but uh, we have some pretty good ones that we said, uh, that uh, should be in the next year, the next month or two. So overall, uh, that's the recommendations for our twenty twenty-four allocation and the fifteen thousand that's being reallocated. Now, the CARES Act money, uh, what we did for CARES Act is to be more flexible, especially in the spring of twenty twenty. As we have these major categories on the left here, this uh, far left column. Um, these red ones are new ones. Uh, we have to reallocate anything under emergency assistance, because it's not considered emergency at this point, this far away from the, the um, the height of the pandemic. So office on aging, seventy thousand dollars, you can take them over here, but it can put right back into a new program called Senior Assistance. But that is, and there's gonna be legislation coming for this, is the Senior Lock Box Program, so it's allow um.
Oh, nice.
Two services to get them to go home, uh, without breaking the door down.
Yeah, that's nice.
Um, and it'll be, so. And the rest is for outdoor congregation or outdoor public spaces, which are eligible. CARES Act required that you prevent, prepare for, or respond to the pandemic, so uh, these are sort of. I'd say these two are respond to, and this one's prepare for whatever comes next.
Hmm.
That's it, so is any questions?
I have a couple of quick ones, I, so H R C, the subcommittee asked for more, but they didn't get it, to, was there?
On the subcommittee?
Yeah. So what was the, what did they want it for, and why didn't they get it?
Uh, H R C got the full amount of sub, subcommittee recommendations and requests.
Okay, then I read it right.
This one, they got less, but that was mostly due to other input.
I think it was uh, one of the other charts. You know that?
Oh, this one?
Yeah, thank you.
So uh, this was indicated by the executive director as being the first place that kind, you probably needed a fifteen percent.
Oh, was it here? Okay, I got it.
Yeah, it's hard to really, if you're a new organization, it's hard to, to raise these up substantially with that cap.
And, and was what you were showing, and all that, that increase in money for housing, is that, that's what you showed us, right? What, what you were spending it on?
With the housing programs.
Yeah, because I noticed that was uh, the, the largest increase.
Yeah, one fifty, so normally the request would be like a hundred thousand for paint and between twenty and forty for violation repair, so it's a, it's a little bit higher than a normal allocation.
And it's all getting used and this.
Yeah, this actually, um.
And it runs out?
A lot of money is spending, especially those that.
Does it usually run out?
Violation repair usually does, paint usually goes down pretty close to. And now we have two rehab specialists, so hopefully we're giving the, our projects out, okay.
Questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, um, I'm gonna skip down to legislative review from the council rules and uh, the class test. All right, right here, who wants to take this, you just wanna go through it?
I'm sorry, what was that? Wanted to walk through the legislation?
Yeah.
Sure. I guess, and I do this almost every meeting, I would first ask if there are any questions. There is a statement in the memo appended to each piece of legislation that um, provides at least a short explanation of the purpose of it. The first one is Resolution sixteen twenty twenty-four, which is authorizing the renewal of the city's agreement with Flock Group. Um, for road surveillance cameras and the, and that network requested through the police department. Uh, fifty thousand dollars a year for five years.
President.
Yes, go ahead.
So confirming, we already have fifty thousand dollars in the budget for twenty twenty-four for Flock, so we'll see that each year through the last, through the five years then. And we won't have to redo the contract anymore.
Yes.
Correct.
That's good.
Anything else on that one?
Um, so, are, are we, by going ahead with this, are we saying that future councils are automatically putting this in the budget in future years? Since it's a five year contract?
You can only certify funds for the current year, so there's a, um, an additional certification of funds required each year, but it's a contract with a five year term. You can't certify funds now for future years.
However, so, so I, I think if I might.
Oh, please.
This is President, um, the answer to your question, sort of not, not in lawyer speak, is yes. We are creating an obligation for the city for five years instead of one year. So in order to meet that obligation, future councils will have to budget the money in order to spend it on this contract. Um, it is, in my view, well worth it, um, especially considering the fact that the alternative was either to not use the service anymore. Or to, um, I guess, create a situation where the cost of this service would more than double.
I see. Alright, um, if there's no other question, we can move on to the next. Please.
So I can tell you what the purpose of uh, this agreement is, um, but I can't give you any particular details. Um, this is to uh, enter into an agreement with all city management services for crossing guard services from August of this year. Excuse me, of last year through June of this year. Uh, the agreement provides for a total cost not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars, with one half of that amount to be reimbursed to the city by uh, the school board.
See. Uh, do we ever get recommendations from the crossing guards on safety measures we might need to take, does anybody know?
Not that I've ever heard, um, at least not through official, if, if there were, it would go to police, police is their uh, primary contact. For the crossing guards and also if there are any parents or residents who have concerns or complaints or compliments for the crossing guards. They refer those to police as well.
Can, can I go back to the Flock Group just for a second, I'm sorry? Um, a couple of people emailed me today saying basically they had big brother concerns. Want to address that, Mr. Mayor?
Not especially, but I will, um, I'm, on a personal level, I'm not a huge fan of the surveillance state. Uh, at the same time, in this particular instance, I think that our ability to um, not rely solely on whether or not. There is a police officer physically present to see whether or not a stolen car that was accused in a shooting passes through an intersection. I think that it is worth having these cameras to read these license plates, and when the license plates come up in our database. Um, it's important for the safety and security of our residents that we can be alerted to that. Now, I, I, I know that um, we've got a great deal of concern, especially with the, the rise of A I and facial recognition, which we are not using facial recognition. Um, with this, either this or our other um, surveillance system, we're not using facial recognition. Um, which has its own problems in, in uh, when that technology has been used and. But in this case, I think that um, it is more important, given the rise of stolen cars being used to then go commit other crimes and victimize our residents. Um, it's better that we know that a car that's been flagged is entering our community. Um, and, and so that's sort of on the notification side, on the other side, um, it is helpful to more effectively. Solve the mystery of how a crime was committed, if we're investigating. Um, I can understand the concerns, um, anytime you add surveillance to a situation, there are concerns about. The possibility of that technology being abused. Um, I think in, in this case, we've got safeguards in place um, as to who is actually allowed to access, access these systems. Um, and, and those sorts of things that prevent the kind of abuse that we might see in other uh, examples. But I, so I'm, I'm not concerned in the same way philosophically as an individual, um, you know, I do wish that we lived in a circumstance. That didn't make these things useful. But unfortunately, I like looking at the, the trade-off, I prefer that we. But unfortunately, I'd like, looking at the, the trade-off, I'd prefer that we stop a carjacking from happening than have to respond with fewer tools to do so to the carjacking, um, that's already happened.
I appreciate that explanation. Law Director, you can go on.
Uh, so the next one is a, uh, piece of council legislation where council will be, uh, reappointing two members of the Commission on Aging to terms ending three years, uh, from now, essentially December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Um, Councilman Petrus, do you wanna address the opposition?
Sure.
House Bill sixty-eight.
Um, so as the purpose statement says, the purpose of this resolution is to oppose, uh, the enactment of House Bill sixty-eight as discriminatory, harmful to transgender youth, and a violation of parental rights.
No comments? All right, hang on. Move to the next one. Uh, this is, uh, oh, twenty-five, two, twenty-four.
This is the appropriation.
Yes, yes.
So we've got, um, our interim director of finance, Schuster, here to provide some answers to questions, if anybody has any about the budget adjustment. Relatively straightforward, but, um, I can, I can provide a little bit of, uh, context as well for the need for this part of this, but if, if there are any questions, we can attempt to answer them.
President Good.
Yes.
Thank you for giving me that information. They've got the unencumbered balance, and that's where the hundred thousand dollars will be transferred from, to pay for the upgraded needs of the police locker rooms, correct?
Yeah.
So the, the budget, the balance in that fund right now is nineteen million nine hundred seventy-three thousand six ninety-two. So there is money available for this. I did wanna ask, what, did they discover something that weren't, they weren't anticipating when you started the project?
N- not exactly. Well, so, I think council was working to be helpful by using ARPA funds to supplant other money that we would be using. What it did, though, was complicate the process of, uh, actually getting the work done. Um, so there are additional strings using those federal funds, and since this is sort of part of a larger project, um, adding those additional hoops that we have to jump through to a process that had already begun, and had been sort of shopped and, and, you know, uh, vendors brought in to, to, you know, work on the, on the project, it's, it made it too complicated to actually, um, get done within the timeframe. And that's why we're asking for this to be expedited, is because we've got quotes for work and for equipment, for, um, materials that will go stale if we don't move forward, and that's why we're requesting this shift back to, um, our own dollars instead of the federal dollars, because we, we won't be able to get through the project in a timely fashion if we don't.
Which is important for the morale of the police department, so, thank you. So that might will go back to our, go back to the ARPA funds?
That's correct.
Okay, um, sorry, this is a lot harder than paper. So, is the next one, zero twenty-one, twenty twenty-three?
Twenty.
Or twenty.
That is.
Oh, okay, I passed it.
Who has questions, Russell?
First one. Okay, lifeguards.
I don't know. I don't think there's too much of an explanation for this one of it. I think everybody, uh, pretty much aware of, the legislation is asking that, uh, that the city, um, continue to pay for the lifeguards for the pool, and that, uh, also just the budget for that, and I wanted to make an amendment. Amendment that, uh, E B D has an emergency so that we can get applications out ASAP to hire, um, lifeguards for.
Do we need to do that here, uh, or, um?
You can't actually amend it here. You can discuss it.
Okay.
Just discuss it.
Go ahead, Councilman Cobb.
What council committee did this go through?
Uh, was it Parks and Rec? I don't.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I have a bunch of questions. Um, and when we say Parks and Recs, was, was that last year that?
Yeah, you were there.
I, I don't recall that, so.
You're on Zoom, but you never spoke.
Here, here, and I just thought we were exploring this. Here are the questions that I have about this. What's the current status of the negotiations with the facility sharing agreement between the city and the school district? Does this impact those negotiations? What is the value of the facilities that the city is making available right now to the school district? Principally, the value of the ice time in the locker room? Uh, the value of the, um, uh, Denison Field, which I understand the soccer team uses? What was the prior agreement that the city had, if there was one, with the school district when we were using the pool? Why can't the school district offer memberships to its residents, uh, as does Beachwood, Lakewood, and Euclid? Uh, do we know how much use there's actually going to be of this in terms of, uh, lap swimmers? Are they, is the school district hiring the lifeguards and we're reimbursing them, or is the city gonna be hiring the lifeguards? The insurance that I've heard talked about, is that coming from the school district, or is the city gonna have to provide for that?
Can, can I ask you to hold?
Sure.
Can we, can we start? I just got a feeling if you keep going, because, I, I mean, I want you to get them all out.
Yeah, I don't recall any of those questions being answered at any point previously.
And I don't recall anyone asking those questions. I know you were at the, the meeting that we had to discuss this legislation, and, uh, we did vote it out of, uh, committee, and we had, uh, discussion, you wasn't there. You weren't there. Everybody else was there, but you weren't there.
At a council?
No, it was at a committee.
Yeah, there were six of us, I recall this, there were six of us there. You were the only one that wasn't there. I mean, well, you were required to be there.
Right.
But, go ahead.
Yeah, and so it's been out there from twenty twenty-three, and this is the first I've heard about the information you're requiring or asking for. The, there have been a, uh, a long-term agreement with the Scoop District and the city to, uh, pay for the lifeguards. The, they have been doing that for a number of years, um, already. Yes, there was a additional agreement with the city, but, um, that was, uh, removed when we received, when we got our new mayor. So that, that changed because, uh, of the.
Administration change.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I think he was right.
Did you wanna address anything else right now, or just?
Well, I was just, just one.
And go one by one.
Just going by the information that, um, this is the first time I'm hearing all of this information, and this legislation's been out since last year.
Okay.
So, um, all of those, some of those things, I would have to get information for him, uh, to answer those questions.
All right, Councilman Mannix.
I, I guess my concern is if this was only discussed in a committee at all, uh, in a committee meeting, I think that's where my confusion is. We never actually had a, a discussion as a full council and committee to hold, and I would like to either do that and have a more robust conversation about it, or send it back to the committee that I'm now chairing, so that I can get a sense of what's happening with this, and bring in members of the administrative staff, so I can just get a sense of where we are, because I, I, I have similar questions. I didn't realize that this had been vetted only in committee, but it never came back to committee to hold once that vote to, to discuss it any further, I'm assuming until tonight, because I've definitely not missed any of those. So I, either I think it needs to be discussed in a more robust manner during committee to hold, or go back into committee so that we can have that conversation.
That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, but, Council, Council, did, was this ever read in, like, did it have a reading already?
No.
It didn't, okay.
Yes.
For sure, it's only first reading.
It's only on first reading.
Okay, got it. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Um, so, for one, I know that on the legislation, it does have the parenthetical that indicates that it would be referred to that committee, which is fine by me if, if you'd like to have a more robust, uh, committee discussion about it. Uh, I know that the three of us have had conversation in private about it, um, and we can revisit some of that information sort of more, uh, in, in the committee structure as well, and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, and we can bring in some people to provide a bit more context about, um, the agreements that have taken place previous to this, and then when they actually ended, wasn't the new administration, it was when COVID began, um, is, is when that really ended. But I'll, I'll, I think the, the, the administration welcomes the conversation in committee. I don't know that we have, generally, committee of the whole is probably not the best place because there's so much on the agenda for committee of the whole, that we don't really have the time to spend an hour or two on it. Um, but, but the administration welcomes the time to, to discuss it. I think I've been clearing a variety of different fora, um, about my opinion of this particular issue. Um, you can go look at podcasts I was on, or, you know, the, the meetings of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, um, for that, and we can revisit that as well.
A variety of fora?
Yeah.
Councilman Russell, you're the author, I, I'll leave it to you, if you wanna.
Well, the first, the first, uh, it went through the committee, committee voted it out, uh, to move forward with creating legislation. We're in a committee of the whole now for a discussion, uh, as we all agree that all legislation from twenty twenty-three would be moved forward into committee of the whole, so it will stay in committee of the whole for a further discussion.
That's what you want, okay.
Yes.
I'm fine with that. Did anybody have any more questions about the, I mean, I, I, Councilman Cobb had to say, yeah, Councilman Cobb had several questions.
We can, we can address those at another time.
Okay.
Because, I mean, he's just given that, he's just given that list right now, which is a long laundry list that needs to be addressed.
And, and I, I, I'm not opposed to our, um, funding lifeguards, but those are some questions that I have, and I apologize that I wasn't paying attention closer to this legislation, but this is the first time I've actually, you know, seen it in, in its form. And again, I just wanna make sure that the city is, that there is, um, some equity between the city and the school district in terms of expenses. I, and I, and I, again, the question has never been answered for me, is, is why the school district cannot offer memberships to the residents to be able to use its facility? And I understand they have a legal opinion out there that said that they couldn't, but I've never seen that legal opinion, and my question would be, why are some other school districts able to do?
And why did we stop paying for this, the, the lifeguards that we had been paying for for many years?
Well, I'll tell you what, it, since you're willing to discuss this, uh.
Yeah.
Councilman Cobb, could you, did you have these written down?
Yeah.
Okay, I think it would be good for you to send these to, would it be, uh, uh, Law Director, would it be okay if, uh, the councilmen sent the questions to everybody, including, uh, obviously?
Or to Addy, I think.
Vice President Russell, and then, uh, you know, we won't exchange any emails, but just so that we all see what they are, because I, I can't remember everything he just said.
Yeah, I mean, this, this has come up a couple of times, and it is, um, not a violation of open meetings to have a one-way, one-time communication from one council member to the balance of council, but if there are replies, automatically violating open meetings. So I would just advise caution.
Vice President Russell, I, I did have one question.
Sure.
Have you two?
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, just on that point.
Yeah.
Um, would it accomplish what you are seeking to accomplish to have, uh, Councilman Cobb email his questions to Addy for her to include in the materials that are sent to council for the next committee to hold meeting?
That would.
I think that might be a suggestion. Councilman follow.
Um, the question I had was, yes, go ahead.
If it goes to Addy to send out with the pack, the next package, it would be nice if at least Vice President Russell could get those questions before that, so she can start to work on answers.
Correct. I'll get them out to everyone first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Um, I, I was gonna ask, you know, in section.
Yeah, would you say?
Section one says this council hereby allocates up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's, uh, and for the period of September first to May thirty-first, um, would you consider extending that if and when, you know, the pool? I guess we could amend something later on.
Yes.
But I was just thinking, if the renovations are done, let's say next year to come around the pool, and for some reason, the arrangements ran a little bit longer than you, you know, you thought.
Yes.
It would be, you know, you don't wanna put that in here as a contingency, maybe just, like, let's just say this, this were to pass, and then we could just.
Yes.
Revise it.
I'd revise it.
Okay, because that was the only thing I thought of that was outside of that period of time that, you know, might end up being relevant. All right, we can go to the next piece of legislation.
This is. So this is an application, supporting and authorizing the meter submission of an application to the O D N R Clean Ohio Trails Fund Program, uh, for a grant under the program to accept it and enter into an agreement if awarded. The agreement is to provide for funding an amount, um, up to five hundred thousand dollars. And what's being distributed now, um, is a red line of the legislation, uh, received from the planning department today, um, reflecting language that O D N R indicated it would like to, um, modify in the legislation. These are minor tweaks, essentially, but given that they'd like this language, it would make sense to amend by substitution when you get in there.
That's you have.
Whoop, sorry.
There is one numbering error that I noticed, because there's a new section inserted, so let's, the last section would, would now become section four if council amends by substitution.
I'm sorry, did you say that the, the first section three is new?
Um, section two is, the, the new section two is new.
Okay.
And then section three is, has a new heading, and then the next section.
The section four. I, I don't have any questions, can anybody?
Yes, please, though, I'm sorry, so, in the document that was just passed around, so, um, we have a new or renumbered section three, and then after that, it says section three, so this second section three, should that instead be section four?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so do we need to change this three to a four on the second?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's a, that's a type of graphic over there that can be amended without authorization, but just wanted to call it to your attention.
Okay.
Without council action, I should say.
Thank you. Living wage, um, Mr. President Russell, do you know?
This is a, uh, ordinance that I want, would like to council to move forward, uh, as regarding a living wage. I do understand that council has the ability to, um, uh, approve salaries and wages, but, uh, we would have to go through, the administration would have to actually carve out with those salaries and then, uh, wages. A living wage could yield a long-term benefit to improve employees', um, morale. It can increase job, uh, satisfaction. It can create, create a legal and ethic obligation. reminding the stakeholders of the legal ethics and obligations of the city to ensure that its employees are paid a fair and livable wage in line with the principles and social justice and human dignity of our city. Uh, a living wage would also give us the opportunity to demonstrate the values that Cleveland Heights residents and uh, we as council people uh, adhere to. And by implementing a living wage ordinance for the city employees, that's gives a priority to fairness, economic stability, as well as social justice. I think it's something that uh, we should as a council and as a city um, look to our employees and let them know that we support them in a social justice way, as well as uh, in a dignity and humified way that they should be able to afford um, to pay for their food, their rent, their transportation, and their basic needs of healthcare. And, and working here at the city, they will be provided a living wage. That's what this legislation is about.
Vice President Russell, I just wanted to ask you if this, I have two questions, actually. Is there a definition in dollars and cents, or, I mean, I see the definition, you know, housing, food, healthcare, the basics, but do we have a, an idea of what that would be?
Well, that would come from the administration with the living wage, as the administration would look at and determine what that living wage would be, in that rate. So um, it's just making sure that our employees are able to be able to survive on the essential needs that they need to survive in Cleveland Heights.
Okay. And lastly, did you, I, I mean, this is obviously a well-intended and, and, and somewhat needed uh, sentiment. Is there any unintended consequence that you thought about that might happen as a result of this?
Uh, no, I have not thought of any, anything bad that could happen as far as having a living wage. Yeah, but no, I think it would just do, uh, resident, I, I think the employees would like it for those who may not feel that they're creating or making a living wage. And it could improve morale, it could improve a lot of different things. And uh, we as residents of Cleveland Heights, and I think the citizens, and I believe council believe that everyone should make a living wage. You should be able to be uh, paid uh, our worth and be able to uh, pay for our groceries, our food, our shelter, our healthcare, our transportation, our necessities that we need. And by us saying that, we agree to this, uh, we are uplifting uh, the workers of Cleveland Heights.
Okay. And this is for first reading, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
I would like to say that for me, this legislation represents a viewpoint that when we do review the salary schedules and we look at implementing, you know, implementing new ranges for payment, that we keep in mind that the living wage today in this world is much greater than ten dollars an hour. So I'd just like to suggest that this um, is well-intended legislation for the employees of Cleveland Heights.
Councilman?
Well, I understand we do have a salary study and survey being done. It's without the results of that and without knowing what um, the living wage is, it's difficult to know what the impact is gonna be on the city budget or finances. Um, what the ripple effect is gonna be on um, other salaries that were gonna have to potentially be raised from doing this. Um, I'd like to hear more from the finance director um, about this. So I understand this is a first reading. So um, I mean, I got a bunch of questions. Again, should, I don't wanna take up time, cause it's seven fifteen. Should I pose those to all of council? Were you gonna refer this to a, a committee for further study or review?
So it's finance committee?
No.
It would actually be admin services.
Or anyone's work.
Do you, do you want to refer this to?
Committee of the whole. That's what we agreed upon.
Okay.
All legislation is clean up.
All legislation, okay. So um, again, you, you know, by all means submit them. I, I agree with Councilwoman Larson. This is, on this chicken egg thing, I mean, this, sorry about that. This could be uh, kind of a guidepost for what's to come with the, with the salaries as opposed to, you know, driving it. And uh, you know, but I, I certainly think the, the question should be answered.
Again, I, to be clear, I am in favor of our permanent full-time employees being paid a living wage. I just think it would be prudent for us to know what the financial impact of, of um, this legislation is going to be before we pass it. What the impact is gonna be on any existing contracts that we have with any of the unions, which can't be superseded by this legislation. Again, um, so those are some questions that in my mind, we need to answer before we pass it. I understand we're doing a first reading on this. Uh, so if that needs to, you know, again, I'll, I'll send my questions that I have, and hopefully we can get those answered at a future committee of the whole, if you're not gonna refer it to the finance committee.
Councilman?
My, my question is about that, and what we're referring. I know we agreed that we would move things to committee of the whole. My concern is that in doing so, that they will not have the kind of conversation they need to have. If many of these pieces of legislation were in a committee, they would be discussed for a thirty minutes or an hour versus fifteen or twenty minutes at this table. So I'm getting the sense that I, what I don't wanna happen is that we keep a bunch of stuff here, even though we have legitimate questions, so that we keep moving things through, because I, I have questions about this piece. And so with that understanding, my question is whether or not something staying in committee to hold is, I think we should agree on how much time we're willing to actually discuss these items in committee to hold with the time that we have, or commit to putting it back in the committee to answer some of these questions. Because you simply can't have these conversations in fifteen, twenty minutes on one point of an agenda in a committee of the whole.
So on the practicality issue, I completely understand what you're saying. I'm just going back to what we had spoken about at a previous committee of the whole meeting, which was is that the legislation that was from last year, we were gonna do here. Now, if, if this does, I mean, let's, let's just be honest, if this ends up being something that like, say, at the next meeting, that, that's starting to take an absorbent amount of time, and we can't get through it, I, I'd like to, you know, at least maybe have some flexibility there.
We can talk about that, but um, uh, also, and that's why I put in the legislation, because we've been talking about a salary study since two thousand and two. And we still have not. Yeah. A salary study has come up, uh.
I'm unaware of that.
Yeah, well, well, two, two, uh.
Twenty-two.
Twenty, not, no, no. Two thousand, twenty, thank you. Twenty twenty-two. We have been talking about a salary study. We've been talking about a salary study for a very long time, and we have not gotten that salary study yet. So um, in this, this can uh, include the salary study with the mayor looking at the budget and seeing what he can do to adjust it to make sure everybody have a li- living wage. So it's not that it's just clear cut. It's, it gives the administration an opportunity to whatever salary studies they have, coming, coming up with the uh, minimum, uh, not a minimum wage, a living wage that all the ways could live on.
Uh, Mayor, do I have?
So I think philosophically, we're all sort of in general alignment. Um, but clearly, as a mayor, I can't just rest on philosophy, so I, I do have to take practical considerations into account. Um, and I think sort of taking a deep dive into what it will mean to implement this as written, um, is certainly gonna be necessary. Not necessarily even to decide whether or not we wanna do it, but to understand what it is that we're doing when we do. Uh, and I don't think that that calculation has been made yet. I don't think those considerations have been uh, taken into account just yet. And so I do hope for a more robust committee discussion of this, whether it's committee of the whole or a committee dedicated to that, like finance or admin services. Um, I'm agnostic as long as the discussion gets had, and we know what council is doing to the government when they impose this on it.
Hopefully it'll be with the government.
Well, no, no, no. In this case, this is a situation where we are creating a particular restriction that actually doesn't take budget into account. Um, it doesn't take um, certainly a downturn in an economy into an account, into account. Um, it provides a more clear, bright rule that has less in the way of flexibility than you'd think. Um, and that may be something that council chooses to do, even knowing what the ramifications are. The, the councilwoman accurately stated that, you know, she didn't see any ne- potential negative side effects of the legislation. And I think that that's where the discussion needs to be had. You need to take a look at what the potential ramifications are that haven't been envisioned yet, so that we can know what we're doing when we do it. It may be that we start chipping away at that unencumbered balance. Um, and, and we may have to restrict services or remove services because we're focusing on certain core things um, as a result of the ongoing um, changes in personal services. And that, and that's fine. That's just a decision that we have to make with our eyes open.
Sure.
So I'm looking forward to the conversation.
And uh, we, there are quite a few different cities that have, have adopted a living wage, and those things we can also uh, look at, look at as well. Lakewood has one, Cleveland has one. And so those are things that we can look at, that we can come together. And I think with, you know, with the mayor and the financial uh, director, that uh, we can come up with something that will give our residents and uh, city workers some pride.
Okay. Councilman?
Just going back to my original concern, I know we agreed to put these things on committee of the whole, but we never agreed to a, a time amount. So how would we be handling that? Cause right now, we haven't, we haven't had that conversation.
You read in my mind, probably unintentional, um, I was actually thinking, you know, we're gonna have to, that's what we're gonna have to do. I mean.
We just said that we're gonna have it in the committee of the whole.
Right.
We'll have enough time for it. If it, if it needs to go longer than that, then we can determine.
Well, I think, I think what we're gonna have to do, I, I, I'm, these two people, I should just actually put, you know, something like five to ten minutes. And then if we don't get anywhere, you don't have to start thinking about putting it in a committee. So I.
But I think five or ten minutes.
Thank you, Councilman. That's, that's.
Five or ten minutes.
Well, I'm just saying.
I know.
It's, it, it, I mean, I'm just talking about, depends, everything depends on what else we have to do on that given time, and, and that's the unknown right now. But I would just say if we had a full agenda like this, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to look at probably something like ten minutes. Um, okay.
So these will all be first reading today.
Yes. So now, okay, we just talked about the CDVG, which is second reading. And now we need to go down to, oh, what? Okay. Um, this is the real hard part, cause there's so much CDVG stuff here. So here's what I'm gonna do. I know it's um, what, what, uh, one ninety, is it, uh, Law Director?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So this is the short-term rental legislation. Just let me say a couple of things upfront. I'm not gonna ask for passage tonight because there were some modifications made to this legislation. Um, and uh, among other things, there's a more robust definition section. Uh, more robust penalty section. Um, seven sixty-nine point oh-two requires a distinctly separate rental registration for short-term rentals. This is like Airbnb's and those kind of things. Seven sixty-nine point oh-three requires that information must be listed on the form, including um, a certificate of occupancy, seventy-six, seven sixty-nine point oh-six states the rules required for property owners to obtain a certificate of occupancy. Uh, and then things like the condition of the property and chronic nuisances are also considered. Seven sixty-nine point oh-eight limits the days that uh, a property can be rented at long-term rentals or a month or more. Uh, short-term rentals are one to twenty-nine days if you're owner occupied, seven to twenty-nine days non-owner occupied. And then the addition um, to my original legislation is that uh, there's a three percent tax collected by the city. Uh, that in my opinion will help, you know, defer, there's always cost to any kind of administrative uh, burden. And, and this will help with that. Um, and I wrote myself a couple other notes here. Uh, but anyway, I, I, you know, we could certainly have questions. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
I would like to ask, um, as you looked at the legislation, have you considered which departments would administer the program since it requires collection of registration process, which, which paperwork?
Right.
Followed up on, following up on nuisance properties and collection of the excise taxes, which would involve the finance department. So do you see that being burdensome particularly to those departments, or?
I, I mean, in, in my uh, email conversations with Assistant Director Butler, um, he just said he needed time to create the form. And uh, this legislation, let's just say it were passed today, or, you know, what, whatever. It does not take effect until August first, and there are two reasons for that. So, so this, I mean, it's up to the administration how they wanna do this, but it, it, the other rental registrations go through the housing department. Okay, Mayor?
We don't have a housing department.
I'm sorry. Building.
We got a, a building and inspectional services division of the planning and development department. Um, and if, are, are you asking me where rental registrations are located?
Yes.
They're located in the inspectional services division.
Right. So um, there's that piece, and then there's the piece that we're, we probably need to do some type of uh, and this is something I consulted with the Law Director on, some type of public relations, not public relations, community information um, campaign. So that the landlords and the prospective tenants will know, you know, what's coming, and they'll be prepared for that. Um, any council questions? Councilman?
I, I know I've stated all my issues with this legislation prior, and I'll take another look. But from what I'm seeing, I still have the same concerns that I did in terms of the adjustments to this housing legislation. In addition, I know that when we were in the housing committee, the administration sent over another piece of legislation to address some of these, and it was never discussed. Uh, I, I think we need to take a look at what their, the administration originally reached out to us for to discuss that. In addition to this, it was never communicated, at least at a housing committee at all. Um, so I would like to follow up and take a look and see exactly what they thought about this legislation and what they put together as well. I believe the mayor sent an email out to both you and myself who are on that, and I don't think it was ever vetted out at all. But so I have issues with this legislation, and I also have issues with the fact that um, we, we never took a look at what the administration offered that would have an impact on some of what we're trying to do within this legislation. So I don't know if this is something that uh, maybe Chairman Peters could discuss in committee, or if we can do this as scheduling committee to hold. Um, but I, I still have the same reservations in addition to the fact that um, we've never had a full conversation about what the administration um, also sent over.
So uh, actually, uh, I did use, uh, uh, actually, the Law Director and I I kind of melded the two pieces together. Um, it, again, uh, resulted in, you know, as I said, the more, a more robust definition section, a more intricate penalty section, and the three percent tax. But uh, I spoke with the mayor today about this. I take it you will dive into this a little bit. And then we'll, if we need to have a talk about this, I mean, again, I'm not asking for a passage today. But if there's something we need to.
If I, can I?
Sure, please.
Um, so yeah, I, I think that, you know, from my perspective, I'd like to take a look at the, the new version that has taken some of the, the pieces that I proposed and incorporated them into um, what you proposed. And sort of look at the, the um, the differences and the similarities and that kind of thing. So that's, that's one thing. So it would be helpful, I think, um, presumably for council, but also for me and, and the department to maybe take a look at a red line, if you could provide that between the last version that was heard here in council and, and this current version, so that we can see the additions.
Yeah.
Um, but then additionally, and we, we met with Councilman Patterson today um, and had a little bit of a discussion about this as well, and he indicated that he was. about this as well, and he indicated that he was willing to take it on as a more robust conversation in the housing and building committee as well, which I think might be necessary. And the reason for that is I know that there are a lot of relatively impactful pieces of legislation that are taking up the committee of the whole's time. And so this would be an opportunity to sort of vet it a bit more completely in a committee in sort of a more final form, especially because I know that you had sort of that email interaction with Assistant Director Butler about the form aspect of it and how long it would take to create a form. But as we relate to Councilman Petrus today, there, even in the version that I sent, and I think that's sent to all of the housing and buildings committee members, late October, maybe? Even that version had quite a few notes from the planning and development department. And so that's why I was hoping when I sent that, that we could all sit down and work together on creating something that could work for the problem that we're trying to solve, but also not set up a department or a division for failure by creating too much of an administrative burden without enough of the resources to accomplish the task at hand. So that's the kind of thing that we wanted to work through as well.
Well, a couple of quick things. I didn't send this over to Assistant Director Butler just to look at the form, I sent the legislation to him. So, you know, I was looking for any feedback and that was the one piece I got. And just so you understand, Director Zamp was on that email too and, you know, I just, I kind of, I always hope when I send it, you know, I'll get the feedback if there's something there, something that needs, so not hearing that.
Well, I think, when it, if I might, when it comes to sort of working together, and I think that's what we were looking toward, a more like, let's sit down at this table, maybe, at some point. And, you know, Assistant Director Butler, Director Zamp, Assistant Director Auriel, we can all sit down and sort of take a look at what the ramifications are, what the resources are, those sorts of things. And we can still do some of that if you'd like, but now that it's sort of officially, I mean, it is officially before council, potentially going back for additional committee discussion because of the changes to the piece. However, the council wants to handle it is fine. We are ready to provide a more robust set of notes on the legislation. And so the specifics of the legislation that you've proposed originally and the specifics of the legislation that I was shopping around, they've had a chance to look at both of those and they've got notes for both of those. If you've taken some aspects of the legislation that the administration put forward and incorporated into this, they might need a little bit of time to take a look at how those things work together.
Yeah, and that's possible, but why don't, you know, again, why don't you read it? Like you said, and if this, if that's what we need to do, because like I said to you today in our meeting, you know, we could do that next week. And if it ends up that it's like, well, wait a minute, this is, you know, we're this far apart, but if we worked on it in the way you just mentioned, we could get it to where we need to do, then we'll do it.
One clarifying question for you?
Yes.
Because this is, sort of this version is now before council?
Yes.
Would you want to pull it sort of out of the committee structure and out of this, sort of the public committee conversation and have a private meeting with us to work on some refining potential?
Is that something legally we need to do?
I mean, it's something we could do if you chose.
That's the reason I was just raising my hand.
I'm sorry.
Because that conversation that you just described is all private, but the three people on the housing committee wouldn't have a clue what was discussed or what adjustments. And that's my concern. These one-off conversations leave out the public and it leave out complete discussion of the three people who are actually currently sitting on the housing committee.
No, but.
That's, so this back and forth isn't going to work because there's no transparency for the public or the three people who are discussing housing issues.
All right, but just to be clear, this was discussed many times in housing committee last year.
Not this version. So if we're going to make drastic changes, then I think there needs to be a conversation with the members of council who need to vote on this legislation. So the assumption that the two of you could work something out, have an understanding and leave this other six people at this table out is my issue. Because when we come back and we have disagreements, you're going to tell me, well, I talked about it with the administration. That means nothing to me. We need to have these conversations at this table in the public.
Well, we would, we would have the conversation.
For five to ten minutes, it seems, and then we're moving on because no one's brought anything else to the table.
No, no, here's what I'm saying.
Having a dialogue.
I'm saying whatever we, whatever we put in front of council would be seven people, well, and the mayor potentially having dialogue on it. Go ahead.
Am I, am I understanding this right? What your, what your expectation is, is maybe you and the mayor get together and actually confirm something in your legislation that you had to bring to council? Is that to the committee of the whole? Is that what you're saying?
I had, I had said to the mayor that I would bring this to him at some point because he wanted to see that.
But I mean, it's your legislation, so if you're putting it together with the mayor, you still have to bring it back to the committee of the whole. So I'm trying to get an understanding. Are you saying that you and the mayor and the staff will get together to shore up your, the legislation to bring it back to the committee of the whole for discussion?
You know, let me ask Councilman Petrus, could you have a meeting for our next meeting? Is that possible?
Sure, sure. So I happened, just before this meeting, sat down with Director Zamp and Assistant Director Butler. We had a very good general conversation about housing and it was during that discussion that Director Zamp said, he brought up this legislation as an example of something and he shared that he has some particular thoughts on it. And so I shared that I would be happy to use, even though the legislation is currently in committee of the whole, I offered to offer the committee as a place where we could sit down, have a working meeting, make sure that everyone's thoughts and ideas are heard and try to fold them into a piece of legislation, take as much time as we need to. Maybe it's something that takes an hour and a half or two hours. I'd be happy to schedule something even in advance of that March meeting so that we could finally get it over the finish line, knowing how important it is to everyone.
All right, okay, then let's do that.
Okay.
I appreciate that. We do need to...
Do you have a copy of the email the mayor sent with that? That legislation on it?
Forwarded to the rest of council.
Thank you.
Certainly.
That with all the notes on it?
I don't have the whole, I mean, I have one with notes.
I would, I would defer to Director Zamp to provide his sort of take on the legislation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just for clarification, so this would be housing and building committee meeting that just happens to be scheduled in advance of our next regularly scheduled meeting. So maybe a week or two from now, is that the sort of timeline that you're thinking?
Yeah, that would be.
And would it be okay for me to work with the clerk to schedule?
Of course.
Okay.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Going back to the swimming pool legislation, I've done some research as I spoke earlier and see, in fact, historically, that we have authorized expenditures and set rates for that. So based on what I've since discovered, I've got no objection to this legislation as it's drafted. I still believe it leaves the mayor open to continue to negotiate a facilities agreement.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do we have, is there other legislation that I know we got to be going?
Well, we've got a four-three, and we've got a, did you want me to pass these out? Drabs that you sent me for the next piece?
Oh, that's the exhibit, the TIF ordinance exhibit to the development agreement for Taylor Tudor. So that, that we have reached, that's one ninety-three.
Right.
From the administration's perspective, that legislation is ready for council action. And I think that's the hopeful expectation of the developer, the school district of the city, is that we can move this forward.
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm going back to an exchange we had, I thought that was that.
Well...
Did I miss something?
Yeah, we can talk offline. I think the TIF ordinance and the development agreement authorizing ordinance are different animals.
Yes.
I think that's where maybe the disconnect that you're referring to was.
Got it.
Can I just say one thing about our consent agenda?
Sure.
So for resolution number zero twenty-two, which is for Red Cross Month, I did speak with Vice President Russell and we decided moving forward that what we're going to do is for ones like these that are brought by council, there are certain ones that the mayor traditionally brought forward, I'm going to keep those that way. But I will put everyone as a sponsor. If you would like to opt out, let me know.
That was the list, ma'am. That was the list that I put forward a while back about resolutions and she had asked me how did I want to do it and I says, you know, just put everybody's name on it.
If you want to opt out, let me know, but otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay, is the consent agenda the only thing?
Yep.
All right, did anybody have any, any comments, questions on the development agreement? Certainly don't want to skip over that.
The only changes, I might, Mr. President, all people are considering that were, or the only really significant one was the inclusion of in section three C, I believe, requirement for disclosure and informing of the city if the developer were able to obtain any additional grants, which could then impact sort of the overall framework of the finances project. So we got that worked out, language is acceptable to the city, acceptable to the developer. So again, from the city's perspective, we think it's good to go.
Good question. The promissory note section, is that something that has happened with other purchase agreements where they give the property for a dollar and then they?
Yes.
At the end of it, they pay us more than one million dollars?
Yeah.
Well, it's a, if everything goes according to plan, they wouldn't actually be paying that. It's an enforcement mechanism.
Okay.
In the event that things go off track.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yes, that's all we got here. Unfortunately, we didn't get to a couple of things, we'll have to put them on the next agenda.
I just wanted to make you all aware, I know Drew Hurst extended an example of a possible resolution that would sit under the party for our consideration at a future meeting.
At a future meeting, okay, very good. All right, this committee of the whole meeting is adjourned at seven forty-three. Thank you.